The City of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for an accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc., to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call (866) 270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo, and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shut-off valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the Automated Meter Reading Installation Program, please visit If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at (866) 270-9629 or the City of Waukegan City Collector at (847) 599-2997.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 16th Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer by, I mean, Bishop Coleman.
Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for our mayor, for his council, all the department units, especially the police department, the fire department, which has an awesome responsibility. We pray for our senior citizens, we pray for all the citizens of Waukegan. It might be one, instead, over 2,000 years ago, Father made them one. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Mayor's comments, I have three things I'd like to discuss. First of all, last Saturday, we did a cleanup in the first ward, and it was a very challenging event. It was a, we did have a great time. There were about 35 to 40 people who volunteered to help, and I'd like to thank those people publicly. Gene Ferry was one person from the city who helped, Izelle Robbins, David Marion, Liz Marquez, David Motley, Tom Haggerty, Pat Needham, Alderman Villalobos, City Clerk Maria Lacour, Jorge Torres, and myself. We did the alleys between 10th Street and Helmholz on Lenox, and we had, I think, three full containers of garbage and rubbish along the way. It's surprising how much rubbish can collect if it's not picked up and managed properly, but thank all of you for helping. We look forward to doing that in other wards throughout the city, and I can tell you, it was a team effort, and the people from the city who helped, I really thank you for your efforts. Second item, Vet Fest. We met with them again today. Illinois Department of Transportation, I can tell you this, they told me that they will make the announcement tomorrow, they will name the performers tomorrow. If they don't, then I will do what I can to pull the plug on that, because we cannot do this in three weeks. So if they don't make the announcement tomorrow, I'm going to have to look hard at where we're going to go with this. Right now, they have forfeited $50,000 of their funding because they missed one of their deadlines, so that's ours regardless, and that $50,000 will be utilized on the lakefront. When we receive a grant, we'll subsize the grant match with that money, so at the end of the day, whatever happens, we'll still be ahead. Next thing is on item N on the agenda tonight, it has to do with the demolition and cleanup of the BRP site. During the process, we went out to bid, we got several really outstanding bids, but during the process, we were short about $550,000 of the budget amount of money. So I went to two people here who have substantial budgets, budgets that have already been appropriated, that being Tom Haggerty and Chief Wallace from the Police Department. I asked them to defer their project till next year in order to make up that $525,000 or $30,000 shortfall, and they did, and Tom and Wayne, thank you so much, because that's how teams play, and this is a team effort, and I can assure you, once we get that BRP down, you're going to see huge things occur on that lakefront. That's it. Next is the motion to approve the regulations of May 2nd, 2016. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next, the presentation by Waukegan Main Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen. Tonight, I want to use my time to thank Mayor Motley, Aaron Lawler, Chairman of Lake County Board, and Dr. Jerry Weber, President of College of Lake County, for being our speakers at the 31st Annual Lunch with the Mayor last Monday. Thanks also goes to Hal Coxon, who served as moderator, and to NRG, our premier sponsor. The City of Waukegan, Waukegan Township, Clean Power of Lake County, Lake County Board, Cuban Experience, College of Lake County, the Waukegan Public Library, the Puerto Rican Society, Consumer Credit Union, Greater Waukegan Development Coalition, and the Waukegan Park District helped make the event successful by purchasing full or partial tables. Feedback from attendees has been very positive. I also want to let you know, Waukegan Main Street is collaborating with several organizations to beautify the downtown area. For example, we're working with Alderman David Villalobos, the Wazinac family, and the Business Roundtable to keep the area clear of trash. With the Waukegan Arts Council and Business Roundtable, we are keeping vacant properties as clean as possible and displaying artwork in the front windows of empty storefronts. And a very special thanks to the Public Works Department for relocating several flower planters located on Jenna C Street. The fresh flowers grown at the Cook Magnet School's greenhouse will enhance the looks of the downtown. Working together, we are accomplishing more than working individually. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, a presentation by Fire Chief George Bridges.
It's very easy for me to speak about how good your firefighters and paramedics are, because I see their dedication and how hard they, and how they train so hard to do our job. And I know I'm a little bit biased, but when outside organizations recognize our employees, that means so much more, it has a greater impact on our guys. Last year, I expressed to you, how the Waukegan firefighters became the 2015 national champions and the over 40 relay world champions in the Firefighter Combat Challenge. That's what we did last year, and those were our physical attributes. That's what they were able to do physically. Now, we are being acknowledged for how we deliver service by Vista Health and the Illinois Department of Public Health. First, I would like to recognize firefighter Damian McClinton. Firefighter McClinton is a 15-year veteran with the Waukegan Fire Department, and he is the Director of our CPR and First Aid Program. One something that Damian does not know as of yet, and this is why we have him here, is that on Wednesday, Vista West, Vista Hospital, will be recognizing him for his public education. His dedication to public education will be honored on Wednesday at 3 o'clock at Vista West. We will also be given Years of Service Awards at this event, at this award ceremony at Vista West. We also have three individuals that will be receiving awards and nominations from the Illinois Department of Public Health and proclamations from Governor Rauner. These individuals are firefighter George Ugaldi. Let me read a little something about him. He was nominated for the EMS Instructor Award. He is a four-year firefighter, paramedic, and he is well-liked, many of my firemen will admit, he is well-liked by our Vista Hospital staff, Lake Forest, and Condell. Unfortunately, he is not here tonight. Well, I'm sure you could imagine why he's not here. He's actually instructing the paramedic class tonight over at the hospital, so that's why he can't be here, all right? But he wanted me to thank you guys. Firefighter Brian Jacoby, he is being recognized for outstanding achievements in public education. Firefighter Jacoby is a 16-year veteran with the Waukegan Fire Department, and he is continually teaching CPR classes for years. He also, in his other job, he is a supervisor of a medical unit at Six Flags Great America, our local theme park. So you will actually see him on our streets serving our community, and you'll see him out there in gurney at the theme park. And finally, I would like to recognize firefighter Marcus Jackson. He is receiving an award from the Illinois Department of Public Health for his heroic response to an emergency incident. Firefighter Jackson is a 10-year veteran on our fire department, and he may be a little upset at me, because we have a tradition at the fire department. We all know that whenever you are in an article or your picture's in the paper, you have to buy your station ice cream. So what I want to make sure I give to you, firefighter Jackson, he was in the Daily Journal for this state recognition by the governor for what he was able to accomplish in his response. And with that, I cannot, because he is an awesome, awesome guy, and I would not do him justice if I did not read his letter that his captain, Brett Stickles, if you don't mind, would you stand up? Captain Brett Stickles submitted for him to obtain this award. And again, we're talking about firefighter Marcus Jackson. "Our department responded for a vehicle accident with injuries. Upon arrival, we found the driver pinned in his vehicle with heavy front-end damage and airbag deployment. His legs were pinned under the dashboard, and personnel were able to gain access from the passenger side. Assessment noted lacerations on the chest and several other lacerations throughout upper extremities. Facial trauma, possible distended abdomen, and diminished lung sounds on the left side. Due to heavy damage, extrication took approximately 30 minutes. Post-extrication assessment noted left femur fractures, possible pelvic fractures, and lacerations to the right ankle, and possible tib-fib fractures. The driver was immobilized on the backboard upon completion of extrication and transferred into the ICU." That's our ambulance. With him doing all of this treatment, he then, paramedic Jackson, performed a needle decompression to his left chest to improve the lung sounds that were noted. The driver was transported to a landing zone at Vista East and met the crew for "Flight for Life." Firefighter Jackson assisted the crew with the patient's sedation, innervation, suction, and restraint while this patient was transported. We want to thank you. And one other thing that I must say about firefighter Jackson is that he's a 10-year veteran, and he's been working on his nursing degree. Are you almost?
I'll be done next month.
He'll be done next month. So again, I want to thank you guys. And Waukegan, Waukegan, I am very, very proud of these guys, as you should be, as you should be, because they do outstanding work, and they are just a reflection of the other 115 guys that are waiting to respond to your emergencies when you call 911. So again, I want to thank you guys, all right? Picture. Hey, can you guys come on up? Take a picture up front.
Hey, George, could you bring up his captain that wrote that letter? Yeah, the captain that wrote the letter, please. Oh, oh, he's not wearing, oh, he's in a uniform, oh. All right. Is the news on here tonight? Make sure we capture this. Chief, are the Aldermen invited to that ice cream?
Yeah.
Amen.
Next on the agenda is the Public Works Committee. Alderman Newsome, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works met this evening. The first items A through G is for draft specifications. Item A, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for new tubidimeters at the water plant. These are required by the EPA to monitor tubidity of the water produced at the plant, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item B, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specification and advertise for replacement water mains at the various areas around the city, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item C, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specification and advertise for bids for carbon mixer drive units at the water plant, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item D, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for replacement of the altitude valve and flow meter at Beech Nut Booster Station, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item E, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specification and advertise for bids for two valve insertions at Lewis Avenue and Belvedere Road. This allows for the valves to be changed with the system still live. Currently, we cannot shut the water off at this location, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item F, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specification and advertise for replacement water mains on Belvedere Road from approximately Keller to Dilger Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item G, motion to authorize the proper city officials to request for proposals for the water plant and water booster station upgrade of the programmable logic controllers, PLCs, for the SCADA system. The existing PLCs are no longer supported by the manufacturer, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item H, motion to authorize the proper city officials to withdraw from SwellCo and provide legal disposal of our own electronics through our current Refuge Hall or Advanced Waste, and I so move.
Excuse me? Oh, yeah. Okay, motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Tempest.
Roll call.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Item I, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the refurbishment of the raw water pump, refurbishment to the low-qualified bidder, municipal well and pump of Wapin, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $87,380. Funds for these repairs are available in line, item 555-916-027693, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Item J, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve the motor fuel tax resolution for material purchases, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item K, motion to adopt, as presented, resolution to reduction of letter, of two, number two, of the letter of credit for River Glen off-site improvements, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, can you, question for, is there a reason why we're doing that?
They've completed the work. This is for the off-site of the water main and sanitary facility. The work is completed, it's just reduced 1,100%.
Okay, yeah. Everything is done, and that's it, okay. All right, thank you, Tom.
A motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item L, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the replacement of one of our Vector debris tanks, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item M, motion to authorize the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for three 12-foot V-Box style salt spreaders, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item N, motion to authorize the proper city officials to award the demolition of the BRP building to the low-qualified bidder, Lake County Grading of Libertyville, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $2 million. Funds for this project are available in line, item 307-130726480, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Villalobos. Any questions on the motion?
Yes, sir, Your Honor.
I do too, sir.
There's going to be a lot of questions, I think, tonight. One of them is, I'm going to ask that we hold this matter over, and reason being, I noticed that Alderman Moizio is not here tonight, and I definitely would like to get his way in on this, but more importantly, as we've discussed in several meetings, that the cost of all of this just appears to be escalating. If we can go back in time, I think the first time this particular property was brought to us, it was a dollar. Some months later, it became $525,000. Then some months later, we heard the word grants, then just many, many questions that I think that a lot of answers have not been given.
I can answer all of them, Alderman, just ask them.
Let me finish, Your Honor. I think it is important that we find out the total cost of this project before we decide to invest these type of dollars. When I say these type of dollars, cash dollars, right now, with too many uncertainties that exist, not just with us, but with funding sources to us. This is a critical point in the City of Waukegan. As we heard, if you didn't hear, I think the other Aldermen should definitely sit down and talk to the Chairman of Finance, and more importantly, the Director of our Finance, as to how the excess payments to fund some of these projects are going to be funded. Mayor, we do not know anything of the cost of cleanup from an environmental standpoint. We have no idea. I think in your email to us, you said that the potential of environmental problems is low. The potential is low. We heard the potential many times over my 17 years as an Alderman, as it relates to that lakefront. I had an opportunity to ride down there today to get another look, and I feel your dream, Mayor. I feel it. It's in my bones, just like it is in yours, and I think every Councilman up here. But I'm a, I don't know if this is politically correct, but I'm a Donald Trump man when it comes to cash is king. The money must be in the bank for us. We're going to drop 500,000, 2 million, and don't know what the cost of cleanup of a property that we probably won't see a return on a dollar minimum. Let's just give it five years. Compounding with, here was a truck that Tom needs, there's a fire truck that's needed, two fire trucks that's needed, roadwork that's desperately needed, and it's not coming from excess sales tax, it's not coming from excess property tax, it's not coming from revenue that's being generated, this is coming from the rainy day fund. Once that's depleted, then we're back to square one. Let's be clear, of the rainy day fund, some of that was bond money.
Alderman, if you-
We could not have picked a better person for demolition and to hold our costs down to Lake County Grading. I know that. I've seen what he can do. He's done and worked for us many a times, but right now, cash, we're probably going to be, before we even get done with demolition, $3 million. Mayor, we don't have the money.
We do have the money, Alderman. As I remember correctly, in this meeting back here, the Alderman told me that you did not want me to bond this project. I did not bond-
I did not bond this project. I talked to Tina Smigelski at length, I mean, day upon day, about financing this project. I talked to Tom Hagerty, I talked to the Chief of, of the Fire Police Department to allocate and transfer the necessary funds to complete this, this project. We underestimated, we underestimated it by five hundred thousand dollars. I allowed, they allowed me to not put a new salt dome at Public Works or do some work in the Police Department in order to make this work. Now, everything you're saying to me, I understand, Alderman. I have talked to Tina Smigelski at length. We put these numbers together, the numbers work, um, I did not dip into the rainy day fund below our, below our minimum, we're still at our minimum, and we're still fine. Um, the issue now becomes, what do you want to do? We're down there now doing asbestos abatement. That's happening right now at this site to get ahead of the demolition. Now, if you want to wait, if you want to wait, fine, but understand this, every day you delay, we don't really have to start this project till July 5th. That's the day it's supposed to start, but abatement's already started. But if you choose to delay this process, that's up to you. I'm telling you, um, my feeling, obviously you know how I feel about this project, this is the key, this is the key to developing that portion of the lakefront.
And, and your honor, I, I think it needs to be shared, that's just not what you want, that's what we want.
That's exactly right.
That's what we want.
Right.
Let's be clear on that. This is not a Wayne, or Sam, or this, this is our project. But sir, there are some, there are pressing needs that we have for this cash that can be utilized, and I think over a certain time period, we can achieve the same thing. I voted against buying it, and I, and I want to make it very clear as to why. I think we could have put an option out there, hold the property, make sure we have it, and then go through these incremental steps. But we're, we're dumping cat, two million dol, two-point-five million dollars right now, Mayor, I just don't, and you've said it before, and I think we all can agree collectively, from Aldermen to staff, that we, the uncertainty of the state of Illinois, or what they're gonna do, the uncertainty of how our revenues are coming in, which is, you know, maybe one and a half, two percent of where we at right now, can we afford to give up two and a half million dollars of something of a return that we can't see a minimum of five years? Or can we go incremental steps? Tear down half of it now, tear down the other.
We can't do that.
And I, Mayor, I hear what you're saying. I'm only giving you what my thought process is, but I do believe, we, all of us need a time to digest what is coming here now. Again, one dollar, five hundred thousand to two million. I really would like to see if we're gonna get some grant money for this. I know, is Mr. Gary Deegan here?
He's here, Gary.
Mr. Deegan, where are we at with the grants? Have we applied for them? Do you think we're gonna get them with your experience? You're very good at this, I know you are.
This is a very difficult decision to-
Speak to the mic, please.
There will be grants available to take this cleanup to the next level. Before we can get to that level, you have a building that is in complete disarray and disorder. You had a contractor from Detroit come in and tear that place apart and get it in such a state of disrepair that the city's efforts are only gonna get more costly as you wait. I was in there most of last week, and during that heavy storm, there's roof collapses occurring, there's asbestos gonna start washing into places that'll be more expensive to abate. There are underground storage tanks that we know about that will only deteriorate further. So the first key step, the only way you remove uncertainty is to get that three hundred thousand square foot building out of your way. We took bids, the city took bids on a very tight spec, a very practical specification, and the bids were extremely close with some very qualified contractors. Brandonberg, Alpine, Lake County Grading, we're within tens and twenty thousands of dollars of each other on this competitive bidding. So that shows you that the scope is right, the time is right, to do that right now.
Thank you, Gary, but hold on a second, Gary. I, I guess I want to ask you, uh, now this is the first I'm hearing about asbestos. And, 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 and here is more information that should be given to these Aldermen when it came to purchasing these buildings. Could that have reduced the cost of us paying five twenty-five? That's one thing, Gary.
That was, Alderman, the five, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was, was a result of litigation. They, we sued them over that, that they failed to appear to close on this property last year. We sued them. We took them to court, we settled this with, I think we paid two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we paid the back taxes that were three hundred thousand dollars. So that's how we got to that number. It, it was a result of a litigation that was resolved by, um, our Corporation Council and their attorney.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Deegan, in your professional opinion, if we don't tear this building down now, it's going to what?
Get more expensive to manage and tear down.
It's gonna cost us double.
It's gonna cost your police force days and days to go in there and keep people out of there. We had the break-in over the weekend, this weekend.
Hold on, sir, 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 stop, 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 stop. That building been down there, I've, I got seventeen years on the city council, I've never heard a police department having to go on the fence was there. Now, all, now all of a sudden, we got folks gonna be going in there, so I, that right there, what they gonna get in there, go in there and get? Letter? Copper.
The more salvageable materials that get removed out of that building, the costlier the demolition will be.
Okay, and, and that part I understand, Mr. Deegan.
But didn't they take all that material?
There is still infrastructure, luckily, that they did not take, that has substantial salvage value. Our demolition price would have been on the order of three million dollars, absent the steel beams and things that they could not take out of there. Yes, they took the easy copper materials and some of the easy fixtures, but there's still plenty to steal in there. And I'm telling you, we had somebody break in over the weekend, cut the locks.
So, are you saying the contractor gets the value that he sell the-
Yes, that offsets their demolition price.
That was all in the bid process.
Yes.
That was all in the bid.
All right, when it's my turn, I'll, I'll add to my questions.
Alderman Cunningham, please, continue.
So, I, I, again, I, I do believe, and thank you, Mr. Deegan, I know you, you have really, but Gary, why are you up there? Uh, I, I was down there today, and, and Mayor, this is a little off, off center, but I think is important, you have an existing plan or conceptual of what, uh, the new improvements we're making. Do you have a visual of that?
Hmm, I do.
Or can you bring that to council, uh, uh, and I want to commend this, that is a grant, that is a beautiful outlet, what I, what I went down there, and I think we need to see that, uh, at least I haven't, I haven't, I haven't seen it at all, but if you can make sure that comes to council, Mayor, like we did before, have it out there.
That was, that was thanks to Tom Hagerty and his crew.
Yeah, well, if, I know, but Gary, you, I know Tom, you're the end user in making it happen, but our engineers over here, if we can get that here so folks can take a look at that, that is fantastic, sir. Great job of, 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 of what we kind of, I don't want to say rehab, re, what you want to call it, Tom? Okay, there you go. But, uh, but with that being said, Mr. Deegan, I still would like to know, before we move further, what is our potential estimated cost, in your opinion? Uh, Mr. Wolf has done this before us, many, many times before, of taking down buildings. I can go back to the OMC property, uh, him and his team was over there, so that's not an issue for us, but I, as an Alderman, would like to get a better understanding of the cost, the overall cost, and I know we can never, we only can predict this from the environmental, because certain things happen, we've seen the, those things come back to us before, but can you give us a print, just a, a good estimate before we move on today? And that's what I'm asking for, sir.
We work very closely with Tom Hagerty and his staff all week long, as these bids came in, we asked the contractors to give us value engineering as part of their bid. Take a look at that building, tell us what you can do to reduce the city's cost to demolish that. Lake County Grading rose their hand and did that for us. So we have a bid that we're very confident in, that it can be done for that price, and that price not to exceed. We have some allowances in there for some uncertain environmental conditions that are right there within that two million dollars that the mayor is asking for. We knew that was, what was set aside was only a million and a half, but we were not comfortable telling the council that we could get it done for that at this point. We are comfortable saying that for another half a million, go to two million, we can get that done fully and completely, and you will have a lakefront that is much more ready to develop than it is with that building in place.
And, and maybe I was unclear, Gary, and I, I hope you don't mind me calling you Gary.
That's fine.
What I mean by a total cost, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, the eight hu, three hundred thousand dollars, two million, now what is your, what is your estimate? And you've done this before, and I know, I know you're very good at it, what do you think from a cleanup standpoint? And I, I think Mayor emailed us, emailed us earlier and said, there was a phase one and a phase two completed already, is that correct?
No, not phase, not phase two.
There have been many pieces of work done to predict this cost. What we have in here right now is two hundred thousand dollar allowance for asbestos abatement, and we have another hundred and thirty thousand for cleanup related to the petroleum tanks that they left in the ground when they were doing the engine testing over there for years and years and years. This site, fortunately, is not the Coke plant site, it is not a Superfund site, it has a better condition than the OMC property and the Coke plant, otherwise it would have been wrapped into that same Superfund, uh, situation that the other ones were in.
So, and, and I, I guess, once the building is tore down, then we're done. Then you go back in to check and see if there is contaminants and things like that, correct?
Correct. You cannot do that cost-effectively until you get those foundations and that building out of your way. We did the same thing for Lakeshore Foundry, we did the same thing at the Diamond Scrapyard, we did the same thing down at, uh, the old Fansteel property on the South Lakefront. So that's when you can really start to nail down your environmental conditions and make developers comfortable that there's not a big uncertainty anymore. When they see that building gone, those foundations gone, you can say, okay, your pre-development costs are this, to achieve the cleanup that you need. And then they're ready to make that investment. Right now, in that condition, no one's gonna auction that thing off because it's too scary looking.
So just, just so I'm clear, I can't go in and do bor, uh, soil boring testing right now with the condition of the building, it must be down first, is that, yes or no?
It is much more prudent to do it with the building gone.
So, it's, it'd be more efficient for you for a better assessment?
It would, it would make a better condition assessment that the city needs in order to remove that uncertainty.
Okay, I, I still renew my holdover, and I have to get Alderman Mozzio's opinion, because he was very passionate, as you are, Mayor, and not saying that I'm not, I just think that we, this is a lot to digest from Friday to today, and, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm, I need to be sold. I, I, I'm, Gary, thank you very much, uh, obviously you've always helped us out in the past, and we've done several things in the first ward, on all those things you're talking about, but I believe that this needs more time for us to, to look over, talk about, and get a good, strong feeling, so we all can move forward for the betterment of Waukegan. Thank you.
Tom, can you explain to the Aldermen about the asbestos abatement and the delay, please?
Right now, their schools are, their contractors are, are getting schools, a lot of them are going out in schools.
Can you speak on the mic, please?
If we prolong this very long, the, the asbestos abatement contractors will not be in till probably September, um, they're gonna be tied up with the schools. We can get them now, we can get them before they start the schools, it'll be a nice project for June, otherwise, we won't see them till the fall.
And they'll delay, they'll delay.
That, that will delay, that will delay the whole timeframe of the project.
Can I ask a question, since we're on asbestos? So who, you said that there's asbestos abatement going on right now?
No, the asbestos assessment is going on right now.
Assessment.
Oh, assessment?
Yeah.
And who?
Once the contract is awarded, Deegan's doing, Gary Deegan's firm is doing it.
Okay.
Once contract is awarded, they'll, they'll solicit, uh, three, three estimates from, from qualified contractors, like we said, there's an allowance in there for asbestos abatement, we feel comfortable with where the allowance is.
Okay, and within the bid that we got from all three contractors?
Correct, everybody bid at the same, there was an allowance for everybody, that was part of their price.
And I guess that's, I, and I failed to get to your office today, I failed to actually look at our bid that we put out there, I guess I was kind of surprised that, you know, you can click on the item on our website, you know, there's bids out, you know, what's open for bid? Is it typical practice that you can't just get an internet document?
Not these, they need to be pre-qualified to do most, most of the work from Public Works.
Okay.
We don't do them over the internet like that, no, ma'am.
And so, much differently than like when we're going out on these grants, there's no, um, ceiling or dollar amount specified in these bids, we go based on the estimate of a million and a half, because that's what we talked about in, in your experience, but there's, when you put out a bid, that's why I wanted to see, when you put out a bid proposal like this, there's no dollar amount?
No, there, there's no dollar amount attached to it, it's based on specifications that we put out. And the specifications we put out were for the complete tear down, and the foundation footings were, were an alternate on it as well.
Okay.
Um, and this is, this is to take the building down and the footings and foundations.
And there's absolutely nothing you were able to, um, aid with, with our own sweat, our own sweat equity with our big machine?
We, we can, we can maybe try, but-
We talked about it a little bit.
The, the only thing that we might be able to do is some of the tank removal, but we're not qualified in hazmat, uh, we're not, we're not qualified for hazmat.
And how did we discover the tanks?
Um, they're, they're listed with the, uh, Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office.
And so, but we didn't know about them until-
Not all, not all of them, no.
We still don't know that, we still don't know that, we, we, how many is there, fifteen, I think? Fifteen or eighteen? We believe there's fifteen or eighteen.
Um, just today's the first one.
Um, it's, it's something that, there's, they're being shown, most of them are being shown as being remediated already, but till we, till we get into them, we, we can't be for sure.
Okay, um, yeah. Okay, that's all I have for you, Tom. I guess, I guess I, we sued them, and we took them to court, and we had a dollar contract for the property, but, uh, obviously, we didn't win, because-
Yeah, we did win.
How did we win if we had a dollar contract and we ended up paying a half million?
Well, we didn't pay a half million, we had to pay their taxes, that was part of, that was part of the purchase price.
Okay, there's three hundred thousand.
That was part of the purchase price. When we went to litigation with them, um, it was, it was the determination of our Corporation Counsel and his, and his legal counsel, that it would be in the city's best interest to settle this thing before we waited another year to pay another three hundred thousand dollars in taxes. So, uh, Corporation Counsel, would you explain that to the Aldermen, please?
The problem we had with the defendant in the case, and the owner, is that when they didn't, they failed to close last October, and we filed a lawsuit for specific performance in federal, in federal court. The law firm of Trob Babowitz and Associates represented the city. We, uh, we had certain motions pending before the court, uh, we had determined based upon the meter that was running on the legal fees, and the fact that the back, just the back taxes for two thousand fourteen with a penalty, which were purchased by an investor, just the one calendar year was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, plus we had to go forward with two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen. So it was in the best, we thought it was in the best interest of obtaining the property for the way we needed to obtain the property, uh, to go forward with a negotiated settlement relative to closing. Now, had we pushed it to the ultimate, it was my opinion, and based upon the other attorney's opinion, what would have happened was, we, if we won a judgment, they would have filed bankruptcy, because it was LLC, it was not a personal guarantee, they would have filed bankruptcy, would end up being bankruptcy court. At that point in time, then we had to deal with the trustee, uh, it would have been a conglomeration of really a pile of legal fees, Alderman, to be quite frank. So when you assess the entire legal fees based upon where you think the case was gonna go, I think that it was a very good settlement, being the extra two hundred thousand dollars, and I think we would have far in excess of that legal fees to the end of the road.
Thank you. I, um, unfortunately, that just seems to be the explanation for a lot of our expenditures, we're always avoiding legal fees, and just, is just concerning, and it's not just on this, I mean, on, on everything, whether it's workman comp cases or whatever. I mean, I appreciate the fact that the chief and, uh, Mr. Hagerty are willing to give up I mean, I appreciate the fact that the Chief and Mr. Hagerty are willing to give up from their budgets to make up for this. But then I just wonder what happens when the police are over budget, because it happens with overtime and things that are unforeseen all the time in the police department. And it's not no fault of the Chiefs at all. It's just a reality of police work.
Yeah, Alderman, this has nothing to do with their overtime or things of that nature.
It's their vehicles. And so, it's a different pot. And I get that. And I get that this is the pot that we're going to use for this piece of property, and yet, we still can't even pick up garbage at our beach. You know, we don't have a reliable source of that unless it's the summertime. So, I mean, I get it. There's different pots of money that can only be used for certain things, but it's just frustrating sometimes, I imagine, to the public when they see us spending a lot of money. And I understand, and you know I support this because I also want to see our lakefront develop, you know, just as much as anyone else. I just... I guess I'm just really hopeful that this works in our favor. I'm concerned about the next shoe that's going to drop, and I hope we don't end up with another, you know, dare I say, a Genesee Theater, you know? So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
I guess I just have three points about this. One is, the person that was going to go bankrupt on this was not the person who owned the taxes. So, as far as I can tell, we've just taken a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars off the tax rolls, and now we're not paying anything because the city owns it. Number two, if we're buying this property or have an investment of over two million dollars in it, as a business person, I'm going to say, you need to sell that for at least three million dollars. Tell me what in Waukegan has sold in that price range that we're going to get that kind of money back. And third, this brings us so far to our stabilization fund that we just have no extra. I know you're saying that we have coverage for lawsuits and all of that, but it's amazing how something will slip through the cracks. As we all know, with insurance companies, they'll find a way not to pay on something, and then we have nothing left in the rainy day fund. I'm all in favor of developing the lakefront. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not willing to bankrupt our city to do that. There's other things that need to happen here, and this just seems over the top that this is one piece of property. And it's just, you know, I'll be honest, if this were my business, I wouldn't be walking away. I'd be running away from this deal. And it just doesn't seem... I know we're in a rush to do this, but you know, nothing good happens when you make a hasty decision. I think we need to take the time to look at this further. We owe that to our citizens. If we don't do it, we're telling our citizens, you don't matter. We're making this decision, one, two, three, and moving on. And that's not okay to me.
Thank you. Okay, I can assure all the Aldermen, we've looked at this very carefully. We've vetted it. The Finance Director and I have gone over this. Noel Kish and I have gone over this extensively. Corporation Counsel and I have gone over this. Russ Tomlin, Building and Zoning, has gone over this. We've brought in Dave Marion to evaluate this process, Tom Hagerty. So, we've vetted it very well. But it would be held over. And Alderman Cunningham, I would appreciate it, since you're the holding it over, that you would come to my office and discuss this. Don't blow me off. Come into the office and...
Stop, 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 Mayor. Mayor, stop. I've never blew you off. Now, don't even put that in there, Wayne. Now, don't do that here, please. I don't blow you off on anything, sir. We communicate through email. We communicate on the phone. So, don't tell, I don't blow you off. Don't do that, Wayne. Don't do that. Don't put it into public minds that Alderman Cunningham blows you off. Don't do that, Wayne.
Okay, fine.
All right? Fine.
Next, Finance Committee, Alderman Valco. This is held over?
This is held over.
Finance Committee, Alderman Valco?
Thank you. We had one item on the agenda tonight, a motion to approve the annual tourism marketing partnership with Visit Lake County, the Lake County Illinois Convention and Visitors' Bureau for an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars funded from one hundred dash one zero six zero two four 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 three. For those that are in the audience and for the members of the council that were not here, this is our annual payment every year to Visit Lake County. They do a tremendous job over... They advertise over two hundred and thirty-one events in the city of Waukegan, and they've figured out that the approximate money spent by a family of coming into Waukegan for their events that they're advertising is about four hundred and thirty dollars a visit. And I think the twenty-five thousand dollars is a steal, and we fund this every year to them. So, the committee recommended approval, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nusam?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
No.
So, all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. There is no old business. There are no reports of communications. New business. Item A, approval of payroll dated May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of one million, four hundred and thirty, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Local one fifty C, time back dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Police Uniform Auxiliary dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of one thousand, eighty dollars. MAP Vacation slash Holiday Buyback Pay dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents. Teamsters Vacation Holiday Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. IAFF Personal Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of seven thousand, ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents. Sick Leave Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. Sick Leave Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of ninety-seven, nine hundred and seventy... nine hundred, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and nine cents. Vacation Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-sixteen, forty-six. IAFF Personal Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of five hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Sick Leave Buyback dated May sixth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Final Payout dated May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of seven thousand, fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Final Payout dated May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of eight thousand, seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Final Payout dated May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. And Final Payout dated May thirteenth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nusam?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Aye.
Approval, item B, approval of bills dated May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen in the amount of two million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
Aye.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nusam?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
Approval of all block parties, all... Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item D, approval of raffle sales application for Andrew Cook Magnet Elementary School. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Seager. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item E, grant permission for the Homer Derringer Post two eighty-one for the annual distribution of poppies dated May sixteenth through May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen at Ace Hardware Store at York House in Lewis and at the Waukegan Train Station. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, accept and place on file the monthly treasury report for the month of April, two thousand sixteen. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item ten, ordinance and resolution. Resolution, item A, resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program specifically eight fourteen Adam Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Seager. Can I ask what the price was? Izelle, are you here?
Yes.
What was the price?
Price?
Thirty-four thousand, five hundred. Yes.
Is this for the... Was the home there, the property, or what did we buy? A house?
Izelle, can you step to the mic, please? That's okay. He'll explain it. Alderman Tempest has a question for you.
Okay. Thirty-four thousand, five hundred. It is a house. Actually, the actual address is eight fifty-four Adam Street, and yes, there's a house there. Right. We're going to purchase it, rehab, and then sell it.
Rehab?
Yes.
How much you think we're going to spend? Did we pay thirty-four thousand?
It's federal money, Larry. It's all federal money. It's true.
I know, but... No, I'm federal, too.
Okay, all right.
I know it's all federal money. We'll buy a third one, and we're going to rehab it.
Correct.
And we're going to sell it back to the market.
Right.
And who qualifies? The public likes to know.
It's an affordable housing program, so the same income requirements will apply. The same one we use with the program as if we were doing a housing rehab or just... Same thing if we were doing a housing rehabilitation. So, a person would have to qualify per their income and the number of people in the household. So, in this case, it's the same as the neighborhood stabilization program. We don't have any occupants. So, we're just... They were actually asking thirty-eight thousand for the property, and so, we offered them that, and they accepted it. Yes, always, Alderman. Yes. More questions?
No more. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman May?
I'm sorry. I... Oh, yes. Aye, sorry.
Alderman Valco?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham?
Aye.
Alderman Seager?
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos?
Aye.
Alderman Nusam?
Aye.
Alderman Tempest?
You've time your turn.
Alderman Tempest?
Okay, next is audience time. Madam Clerk?
Caroline Satrie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Caroline Satrie. I'm pastor at St. Paul's Lutheran Church here in Waukegan.
My name is Sister Peggy Ryan, and I am one of the Dominican Sisters at Most Blessed Trinity Parish here in Waukegan.
And I'm Aileen Shanley Roberts, the Director at Christ Episcopal Church.
And I have a letter here also signed by Pastor Keith Serks of First Baptist Church, Pastor Richard Groot, Trinity United Lutheran Church in Waukegan, Pastor Brad Davick, St. Paul's Lutheran Church, the Reverend Dr. James Olson, St. John's UCC, Karen Byers, and Pat Ludwig of St. Paul's, Kathy O'Brien, Pads Site Director, Libertyville United Methodist Church, and Michael Knight, Pads Coordinator of St. Joseph's Catholic Church in Libertyville. Dear Mayor Motley, first, a thank you. Thank you for bringing us together. Without your bold action of revoking Pads' business license on April fourth, this group of clergy and community leaders would not have come together around the issues of homelessness and human dignity, and for this blessing, we say thank you. Of course, this does not mean we are pleased with the sequence of events. We do, in fact, believe your decision was hastily made and only increased the vulnerability of both the homeless population and local residents. But no one gets it right all the time, Mr. Mayor. Whether we are politicians or clergy or business owners or those in desperate straits, we all have reason to reimagine how we might work together for the good of all. This is what we've been doing over the past several weeks. We've been reimagining how we might work together for the good of all. Here's what we've come up with so far. Over the years, our congregations have responded to God's call to love our neighbors by serving the homeless through Pads. We've seen what can happen when a homeless person is provided with a safe place to sleep, a meal, and at times, a new sense of hope. We believe Pads is a good organization, provides a safety net, and is often the first point of entry for the homeless to connect with services. While improvements can and perhaps even should be made, we believe Pads can be part of the solution and should not bear sole responsibility for the problems a few individuals cause in our city. As a first step to collaboratively address neighborhood and city of Waukegan concerns about Pads, St. Paul's Lutheran Church and Pads will hold a neighborhood listening session and forum on June twelfth at two P.M. The purpose of this event will be to hear and understand neighborhood concerns and issues. Businesses, residences... Oh, excuse me, residents, churches, the Waukegan Police Department, and elected officials will be invited, but all are welcome to attend. While immediate attention has been placed on Pads and Waukegan, we believe homelessness is a wider problem that affects all of Lake County. Therefore, we are learning more about the Lake County Coalition for the Homeless. Our conversation has also confirmed how complex these issues are. No one person or office has an easy solution. We must all work together. Therefore, we ask for your support and leadership in two ways.
Thank you.
Tony Campos?
Is there a number to call you?
Good afternoon. We're here to share some good news, and we're here to work together for the city of Waukegan, and we're here to work with Pat Seager. And I'm going to let my brother Baldemar share the good news that we have for the city of Waukegan.
Hello. I'm the youth pastor at Church of Christ in Lake Villa. My brother Tony Campos here lives in Waukegan, but, you know, we all share the same vision. And we're a small group in the church, and a group of youth that want to serve their community. We want to involve the community in community service, doing some cleanups, some cleanup around the streets. And Tony Campos said, you know, I live in Waukegan. I want to involve the community in Waukegan. I know Pat Seager has the same vision. So, we're just letting you know that there's a group that wants to serve the community and wants to get everybody involved around the community to serve and, you know, do some cleanup, do whatever it needs to have a clean city. I know a lot of churches are doing great things, but we want to put a little seed and do some good in the community, not just in Lake Villa, but, you know, around, also in Waukegan also. Like I said, it's United Methodist Church where we share same vision with Church of Christ. So, that's the good news that we want to share.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
We plan on working Saturday the twenty-eighth for the Second Ward Southeast Side to clean up from Tenth Street, Eleventh Street, Twelfth Street, Thirteenth Street, Lyons Court. It's a big area. Along Elmore Avenue, Washington Park. We'll be out there for a while. But I want to thank Tony and his pastor, the church, everybody that has volunteered to step up, and I myself will also be out there. And I think it's a great... It's a great time, especially from a church, to come in and volunteer people throughout, to help the city of Waukegan. It's great. Tony, I thank you, pastor. I'll be out there Saturday, too, working right along with you guys, and we'll get it cleaned up. We'll get it done. Thank you.
Maggie Powell?
Well, I'm here to paint your world purple and to celebrate. You may be wondering what I'm here to talk to you about tonight, and I'll be happy to tell you. I'm one of the Event Leadership Team for Relay for Life of Greater Waukegan and Far North Shore, and Relay for Life is the flagship fundraising event for the American Cancer Society. And over the past thirty years, this nationwide event has raised over five billion dollars to help save lives from cancer. And Relay celebrates survivors and caregivers. I'd like to invite you all to our event on Saturday, June eighteenth, at Beaver Park. In the last two years, we've had some pretty dangerous weather that has cut our event short, and we are hoping to rebuild the participation. Between three-thirty and five o'clock P.M., we will host our survivor caregiver celebration. And if you are a cancer survivor or you know of a survivor, please tell them about our reception. You're a survivor the day you are dying. You're a survivor the day you are diagnosed, and you will remain a survivor. For instance, I'm an eighteen-and-a-half-year breast cancer survivor, and I look forward to my nineteenth-year survivorship on November tenth. A caregiver is not only a doctor, a nurse, or a metal, medical practitioner, a caregiver can be anyone that takes a, a patient to treatment, visits a survivor, accompanies someone to see their doctor, makes a casserole. At five P.M., the Relay event begins with the opening ceremony, gathering Relay participants and spectators together, and it's followed by the Survivor Caregiver Lap, Team Lap, and everything gets going full swing with music, theme laps, and just walking around beautiful Beavir Park. Seven o'clock, we have a live auction with all kinds of good bargains that can be bought. Ten o'clock is our emotional luminaria ceremony that takes place. And remember those that lost their battle, honor people who have fought cancer in the past, and support individuals who are currently battling this dread disease. Eleven o'clock, we'll have pizzas delivered, and at eleven-thirty, the closing ceremony takes place. So as you can see by the purple blotch on my shirt, the color of hope is purple. The color brand for Relay for Life is also purple because it's the awareness color representing all cancers. I came in saying, I'm here to paint your world purple, how will you paint your world purple? The public is welcome, and please join us at our Relay for Life event. And you can visit us at www relayforlife.org/waukeganil. And I personally invite you, Mayor Motley, or anyone else on this council to come and just visit our Relay at Beavir Park. Thank you.
It's right by my house. What date is that, Bill?
What, what was the park again?
Beavir.
Beavir Park.
And what's the, what date is that?
June eighteenth, Saturday. Yeah, three-thirty Survivor Caregiver Reception.
Marcy Brown.
Hello, Mayor, hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marcy Brown. I was contained by Officer of Waukegan on Mother's Day for no reason, I would say. I was going to famine dollars, and the officer passed a vehicle, my vehicle up, and he was going towards south of me. And he had kinda like jumped at the car, I didn't know he was arresting me, and me and my passenger in the vehicle. And he kinda like slammed me against the vehicle and put the handcuffs on me, and I didn't know why. And he kinda like arrested us, said we had no seatbelt. But he arrested us outside of our vehicle, and I had my seatbelt on when he arrested, before we got out of the vehicle. And so when he arrested us, my passenger in my vehicle, he was very, very upset. And I was calm at the time of the incidents, which will lead to a, a big altercation with other officers coming to the scene and everything like that. So when the officer arrested us, he searched us, and the, my passenger had something in his pocket that he shouldn't have had, which I no longer, I agree with the officer that he should have got arrested for it. So when he arrested us, he, he, I guess seized my vehicle because of the, my passenger was very upset, he was getting the officer problems, so he got upset with both of us, and he seized my vehicle and made the subject pay himself to get out a bond, which I got out for free, but I was upset because I didn't have nothing to do with the passenger of my, my vehicle, what he had in his pocket. So he made me pay five hundred dollars, which I work at nine-to-five for, getting my vehicle out, which I missed my work that night because I didn't have my vehicle to get to work. And I was just very upset about that because I thought, I got a ticket for seatbelt, but I was told by, by officer that a ticket, seatbelt, you get a ticket, you're going by your business. But I was detained in the vehicle of Waukegan Police Department over, for three hours, for me, for no reason, because I had my seatbelt on when he pulled us over. And I wanna know why was I contained by Waukegan officer for three hours? And I was told by the chief that you supposed, I mean, officer, captain, I wouldn't say captain, but he was at the, at the scene. He said that you were supposed to get a ticket, you supposed to go your, by your way. But I was contained by officer, by the police officer in Waukegan Police Department for three hours, and I missed work. Which I shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been done at all, I think.
Okay. Chief Wallace, can we talk about this tomorrow in my office? Okay, thank you. Okay, sir. Are you aware of this, Chief?
Mother, Mother's Day, I heard of an incident, this might be the same one, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
Wanted to talk to him tonight.
Okay, would you, would you mind, Chief, please?
And that's something I did suggest to, that he do, but good job, young man.
Brother Blanks.
Yeah, I, I had him to come down, Mayor, Brother Blanks, found the chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the mine. The situation, I was on the scene out there at the time of the incident. Now, everything that happened at that time, this young man was very respectful. I asked a few people who was out there, he was not combative, he was just as mild as he is and composed as he is right now. Now, according to the twenty-ten five-hundred-dollar empowerment lawsuit settlement between myself, the city, and other parties, everything according to what happened to this man says that he is entitled. And what I'm here for is to appeal to have his money refunded to him. Because he had a valid license, he had insurance, his mother was there with a valid license. And according, and, you know, according to that settlement, it was supposed to be in, in, in the commission of a crime. It's the only time a car should be towed. Now, he left the police department, he had no tickets, nothing more than what was supposed to be a, what, a ticket?
Seatbelt ticket.
Seatbelt ticket. But I think, I know for a fact, according to those settlement laws, he's entitled to have his car. He's entitled to be refunded for that money. And the whole thing is, Mayor, if you're really looking to build better relationship between your community and your citizens, surely, on Mother's Day, with his mother standing out there, that was a day that the city really could have shined. But it took a dark turn. Because at that point in time, this young man could have easily went home with his mother. This matter could, should have been, could have been resolved there. He definitely should have, not have been detained, his car should not have been towed. So if you're truly looking to build better relations between your community and your law enforcement, then it is incumbent that you all have some type of training session. I, I talked to Rick, Mr. Rick Harris about this, and I told him that this particular situation should have been handled a lot better than it was.
It was very out of control.
It, it was, it didn't have to go there. I know the officer who took it there. He had just came by to see me the week before about community relation, about our community policing. And if this is what we want, this is what we have for community policing, we want no part of it. But we are willing to work with anybody who is truly, genuinely, and sincerely looking to build better relations and not just surface thrilling. Because this shouldn't have happened, so I'm looking forward to this young man and our chief, us talking, to see what we can do to make this compensation and to make sure we do right. And the reason we put this on the floor, because all the citizens out there need to be aware, these type of things shouldn't be happening to him and nobody, nobody else.
The chief will talk to you, okay, sir?
Yes.
He'll talk to you.
Stick around.
Okay, thank you.
Clyde Mike Lamore.
Good evening, Council. I attended that mayor luncheon. And one of the things that was mentioned was the George Lucas Museum was mentioned, and it was dishonest of you, Mayor Motley, to put that out there such as Waukegan was in the running. Waukegan was never in the running, 'cause Melanie Hobson, who's a good friend of a friend, has never even heard of Mayor Motley. Melanie Hobson, who also is George Lucas' wife, has the last say-so. Melanie personally has not been in no presentation by the city of Waukegan. Now, I do have a suggestion to you, Mr. Mayor. North Chicago Mayor and Zion Mayor and the three of you do a presentation with Melanie Hobson. You know Zion got seventeen acres of virgin land that ain't never been touched, that birds still migrate to. North Chicago owns half of, some of his lakefront, and y'all can work this together, you know, because Northern Illinois, lakefront is the most, Illinois is the most kept secret. We got some beautiful land right down there at that lakefront. You know, instead of you trying to be, I could do it all by myself, you know? What, what, the only way it could happen, though, transparency and honesty. You know, don't, don't sell us that, because I can investigate and find out what's going on. Second, I was at the last council meeting, and I spoke about the Vet Fest and letters and donations going out to the VFW at fifteen-fifty grand. That letter's been destroyed, she threw it away. But, and I've been to other businesses, and nobody got, I can't get a copy of that letter. But I spoke with you, Mr. Mayor, and with a statement like that, in which I honestly, you said the city didn't do it. Well, maybe Vet Fest sent out letters and asked for donations.
No.
I don't know, this is my time, this is my time, this is my time now. I don't know, but as you as a leader and the mayor of this city, you should have went by there, that's four blocks up the street, and speak to the owner and ask her about the letter. These people contacted me. You know, I didn't go looking for it, I didn't know nothing about it.
You told me you were gonna bring it to me.
Excuse me, this is my time.
Go ahead.
This is my time. Tonight, I had a proud moment. I saw some, I saw, I watched you, Alderman, tonight really stand up. Give me my two minutes, that he interrupted me, give me my little, I'm at the end of this. I, I watched Alderman Taylor, Cunningham, and May stand up. This is a proud moment. Now, these are some of the, this, this is one of the biggest things that I seen y'all do, and I am really proud of y'all because y'all stood up. Y'all just didn't let them just, make the, make the bitter come to y'all and do a presentation to y'all as Alderman, to get the vote. That's how things are done, not 'cause a dictator sit there and tell you that it's done. That's all I got, thank you.
Ralph Peterson.
Yes, hello, everyone. I also would like to say, I'm very, very proud of Alderman May, Alderman Cunningham, and Alderman Taylor, because it just bugs me to no end to see the foolishness that this mayor displays, and it goes unchallenged. And I wanna tell you, tell you guys, you're on the right track, you truly are. There's this cloak of secrecy that he deals with, and like I said, that's why I say you guys are on track. You know, if I were to ask you, have he spoke with any of you on any letters that he's received from Lisa Madigan? Like I say, the city is getting ready to be tangled up into something pretty deep in terms of his past actions with me, law-breaking actions. And I would also like to speak and say, I keep hearing the mayor continuously speak of this cleaning of garbage on the ground. You know, it's hilarious. You know, to be really truthful, the city has been soiled, and the garbage is not so much just on the ground, it's in the mind of its citizens. And this rests clearly on the shoulders of former disgraced, fallen state's attorney, Michael Waller, and I'm gonna say the mayor, the likes of Mayor Motley. This is what we'd like to hear you truly speak about, sir. And I would like to speak and say, and I truly feel this way, Waukegan is a great city, a good city. But it's been under a dark cloud for a long time. It hasn't had the chance to get from up under that cloud and let the rays really shine on it. I'm telling you, it's a good city, but we're never gonna see that sunshine as long as we have the likes of Mayor Motley. And to prove what I say, he see no difference. He, he, to him, and this is his mindset, he views Waller out of his own mouth, you guys heard it, he's a man, a class act, a man of integrity. Come on, the man has hurt so many people and cost this city millions of dollars. And you can actually sit up there and spill that from your mouth? That tells you the level of leadership that we're dealing with. A man of integrity, class act. I would also like to say that this mindset must be eradicated. There's no more room for the likes of Mayor Motley. And it's within us, it's within us to get rid of these guys. There's no way there should be secrets with you guys. You know, I mean, I, I, I bet it's things I know you guys don't even know, and you're the Alderman. We must rid Waukegan of this mindset, and listen to me and hear me well. Citizens of Waukegan, Mayor Motley is of that good old boy mindset.
Thank you.
We need this no longer in this city. Thank you.
Audience time.
Most of you adjourned by...
No, audience time.
Oh, I'm sorry, audience time.
Alderman May.
Alderman's time, I'm sorry.
Alderman May. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Caroline, thanks for coming tonight. A word of advice for next time, and I wish I knew before you started. All three of you ladies could have signed up, and you could have had nine minutes, and we could have heard your whole letter. So sorry about that, I'm sorry I didn't get to finish, but if you're interested in sharing the whole letter with all the Aldermen, I think that'd be a great idea. So thank you, she's a Seventh Ward resident and a leader in our community, so thank you for, for coming to council tonight. Where do I start? Oh, garbage, everyone, everyone's cleaning up garbage, it makes me so happy. I do wanna give a shout out to the Cub Scouts at Saint Anastasia, who on May eleventh took it upon themselves from Jackson to Sheridan, cleaned up Glen Flora Avenue. They were out there for hours, they picked up cigarette butts, everything they could for their home, their neighborhood, that their parish and their school is in. So I, big shout out to Saint Anne's for doing that on their own volition, the Cub Scouts troop. I would love to see every school adopt the radius around their school and pick up garbage, 'cause it does make a big difference. I also wanna say a big kudos to a lot of city staff that were out in the First Ward this weekend, picking up garbage in the alleys in the First Ward. That was fantastic to see, you know, department heads out there vested in their community. So I, I don't have many alleys in my ward, but I'm guessing maybe Alderman Tempest and Alderman Newsome, you guys should hit them up to come, come visit your wards, too. Seventh Ward events. On June fourth, the Dandelion Wine Arts Festival is from eleven to six P.M. at Bowen Park. This is a premier arts event. The arts movement has been alive and well in the Seventh Ward for many, many years, so I hope you guys can come out for that, it's a great family event. On June eleventh, in Lyons Woods, and this is, I think, an inaugural event, the Cool Learning Experience is hosting a fun run, nature hikes and picnic. Their fun run's a two-mile run, and your children who are under thirteen, they get to run for free. You sign up by June first, you get a T-shirt. So thanks to Barbara Waller over at First Baptist Church, am I getting that right? The Cool Learning Experience Kids, it's a great program, it really teaches the kids about the environment, and we'll look forward to that on June eleventh. National Get Outdoors Day, I don't, I don't wanna forget that. The B.R.P. site, so just, just to, for, you know, full disclosure, this council, including myself, I think there was maybe one or two nay votes, we already approved the purchase of this property, and we already approved the purchase and the demolition for a total of two million. So the, the piece that's in question tonight is another half million, give or take, okay? So we already made, we already approved it, so I mean, I just, we knew that the money was gonna come from the rainy day fund. We knew, we knew where the two million was coming from, and it already passed council. The reason it came back up tonight, because now it's another half a million in the contract for the demolition. So I just, I just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that. It's the extra half million that's in question. It's the extra half million that's in question. We already knew that we were doing this, the extra half million is not, is not, there's two, uh, department heads willing to give it up out of their budget. I, I think that's important to point out. I just think that sometimes we need to take a step back and just like you, you know, I would do in my own household, you have, you have to learn how to live within our means. You know, I had a little bit of buyer's remorse after that, and so when this came up, it just brings up some of the feelings you had when you're spending money, you know, when you're spending money that you don't necessarily have, if you're taking it out of your rainy day fund. I wouldn't take out of my 401K to buy a car or a, you know, a vacation property, if I can't afford it, I can't afford it. But I do understand the importance of putting the pieces together at the lakefront. I've worked on the teams that are working in that direction. I do think that it's a big piece of Waukegan's revitalization. But I just wanted to point out some intricacies of that issue. And that's all I have.
Alderman Velco. Alderman Taylor.
I just want to talk a little bit about an incident, and I, and I won't go into a lot of detail on it, that happened in my ward. And it involved teenagers from another community that kind of had a little get-together and decided to call Uber and take a ride out to a forest preserve by us. But before they came, they went and got a parent's guns. They got to the forest preserve and a gun was pulled. Here's the problem, these were 12-year-old children.
Oh my God.
This scares the living daylights out of me that, one, we don't have parents that have guns in the house that are, that have these locked up. Number two, most parents don't know that if you have an account with Uber, your kids can use it. And Uber drove them to a forest preserve and left them in the forest preserve. That just, I, I don't think most parents are aware of that. Third, I'm gonna say, parents, wake up. I don't know if any of you heard the news this morning, um, the Chicago Chief of Police was on and talking about all the violence that happens every weekend in Chicago. And he was saying that not too many years ago, the average age that quote-unquote teenagers were out with guns was 17 to 19. It is now 14 to 16. These children don't have the common sense to know better. It is our responsibility as parents to know where our children are, what they're doing, who they're with, make sure that who they're hanging out with is appropriate. And for goodness sake, don't give them access to guns and don't let them have your credit cards, your Uber accounts, any of this. But I want parents to know this because I don't think most parents knew that your kids could have access to this and could be dumped in the middle of a forest preserve. Not, like I said, the gun issue, as it, as it turned out, it, everything was fine. Although, the guns were, were buried in a neighborhood yard as they escaped. Let me, let me say that we, we, we can't do this, we have to teach our children respect for life. We all matter in this world. And please, as a parent, take the time to explain these things to your children. Because they're 12-year-olds with a 12-year-old brain. But this not only can affect the rest of their life, but look what could have happened. This gun was buried in a neighbor's yard, which meant that any other child could come across this, there could have been umpteen shootings out of this. This is not appropriate, and we are responsible. And it's time that we take that time with our children. Like I said, I wanted to point this out because I don't think parents are aware of some of this, you know, that, that things are so accessible. That's all, thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
The first thing I want to do is, uh, to the young man today, the situation and encounter that you have with, with, with our officers. We recently had, um, a dialogue with, uh, with several police chiefs throughout the county. And one of the things that they talked about, um, not only them, but the other illustrations that was there, is how you behave. It is not the behavior of the officer, but how you, meeting you as a young man, a young lady, uh, more particularly, black young men and black young ladies, and Latino young men and Latino young ladies. You can't control what others do, but you can control you. And Mr. Blanks, glad you, you witnessed that. It is your behavior that I am proud of. How you acted brought that to this body, the mayor, now the chief. That's how we get real, real answers and solutions in our community. And I apologize that it happened that way to you. And I'm apologize that you felt that way, but I can't allow you to leave this council, and I'm expecting the chief to be the same way, that I hate the police. You can't leave like that. So your interactions now with the mayor, myself, the chief, and others will give you a sense that I had a bad experience here, but going further, I know how, not only how to act, but I anticipate to have a better experience. So that is what I am proud of today. Other young men and young ladies gonna follow that example and watch you, and we pray that they do the same. And at the end of the day, young man, that's all we can ask for. But I salute this mom, and I know this is a mother, that's here with her child, and that is where we need to get back to. In the black community, white community, Latino community, this is how we make these changes. Don't, don't worry about what they do, control what you do. We will handle the rest. I'm confident of that, from the mayor, the chief, all the aldermen up here. I am confident in that, young man. So thank you for being brave enough to come up, we appreciate that. Next, I want to thank, I want to thank all of those who came out in, uh, southeast side of town, first ward, south side, uh, for doing this cleanup. Obviously, we know this is the time to do it. Mr. Ezel Robbins, uh, spearheading this, and I spoke with Ezel today, and I told him what happens after these cleanups, that our residents have another grocery list for us to do. It is what it is, a, and they do, but I do appreciate that. And I think, Mayor, there was someone on your page that asked, where was the alderman? Well, the alderman was at a training, that he had to be at his job. So, uh, that's where I was at, but I appreciate those taking the time out of their day, and I know the residents because I received the phone calls, my mom received the phone calls, and I heard some of the responses in the paper. That is what Waukegan is all about. And that's why I'm proud to live in this city and to live where I live at. So thank you and kudos to all of those involved. You even have Tom Hagerty on Saturday. All right, Mr. Tom.
I work every Saturday off.
Uh-oh. Without overtime, Alderman Tempest. Thank you. Uh, next, I do want to, I forgot to do this last time, uh, my daughter, my first born, turned 21, congratulations to her, on May 5th, so proud pop of 21, she's getting older, not me. And, so I wanted to say that. And last but not least, I do have a letter that I need to read, this will be going to our city clerk, and it reads as follows. Dear Ma, dear Mayor Wayne Motley, I acknowledge that you have proposed to remove me as chairman of the insurance committee. While I disagree with the process by which you have undertaken this accomplish, to accomplish this, I have decided to resign as chairman of the insurance committee as I plan to enter the 217 race for mayor of Waukegan. I believe this is, this is the best engine of the city of Waukegan, however, I do expect to remain an active member of the insurance committee. I will be giving this to Maria to have for our official file. Thank you.
Alderman Ziegler.
First of all, I almost forgot, my son and his girlfriend were here tonight. Sean, I, I know you're probably out celebrating, but happy birthday, son, and I love you. Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos. I want to try to keep this short if possible, I was making a list of things to speak about and it got really long. So I'll talk about some upcoming things, uh, right around the corner here. There's gonna be a couple of fourth ward cleanups again, um, for Genesee Street on Saturday, the 21st, uh, from 10 to 1:00, and also Saturday, the 28th, from 10 to 1:00 on Washington Street. I'll be putting up on Facebook events within the next day or so, these events. So if anybody's interested, you can just probably look up, down, cleanup, Waukegan Cleanup, you'll find the event. I'm excited about the Washington Street, this will be the first time on Washington Street, we're doing a cleanup. I walked down that street and I, and you see it too, there's litter there, so I'm excited about that moving forward. As I talk about trash a lot, it's just one of my things I've just gotten into a lot and I'm not, I like picking up trash now, so I'm there. Also another, uh, on Sunday, May 22nd, is the Lions Club's annual steak and egg breakfast. Um, if you didn't get your tickets, you can get tickets at the door. It's gonna be at Bonnybrook, and it's gonna be from 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. Uh, there is also, uh, Waukegan Public Library is still doing their fundraiser in partnership with Buffalo Wild Wings, that goes on to the end of the month. There is also a couple of grand openings in the fourth ward on Wednesday, May 18th at 10 a.m., Rosati's is doing their official grand opening. Um, so if anybody's interested, swing by to that one. Also on Saturday, May 21st, uh, in the, right here in downtown Waukegan is Sisters, uh, sorry, Sisters Beauty Secret Salon, and that's gonna happen from 12 to 3:00, uh, right on Genesee Streets, I don't, sorry, I don't have the exact address, but it's on Genesee Street. Uh, we also have, well, there's a lot, there's Art Walk on the 21st as well. Uh, Friday, the 20th, Waukegan High School's band, which is State Place and Band, uh, will be performing at the lakefront at the band shell on the lakefront that Friday at 7 p.m. There is also, sorry, I have a lot here. Oh, sorry, yeah, there is also on Saturday, May 21st, at the Jack Benny Center is the Live Green Nature Night from 8 p.m. to, sorry, from 5 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And also, aldermen, I want to bring to your attention, something I'm trying to do is, uh, our new superintendent for the school district is coming on board on, on June, and she's doing these meetings and trying to get, uh, feedback from, uh, everybody within the community that she can. So I was hoping maybe as a group of aldermen, we can sit down with the superintendent designated, Teresa Placencia, and have a meeting with her and give us, give her our feedback about what we think about the school district and our experiences. A handful of us have experience in the school district, so I think it'd be very fruitful for us to give her that feedback. Um, I'll be working with Nick Alajakis on that one, so I'll be in touch with everyone to try to set something that works for all of us. What else is there? I'll just stop at that, I think, cause there's all the stuff I did in the past couple of weeks, but that's for another day, another time. I believe that's all, oh, I would be remiss actually if I didn't say thank you, uh, to our church leaders that, uh, putting together the pads for them, I do plan on being attendance for that, that was already in my calendar. Um, also, thank you to everyone who spoke, sir, I appreciate you coming up and telling us about the issues that you have at the Waukegan Police Department. I'm for transparency, I'm, my background's at the Waukegan Public Library where it's all about, uh, not censorship, like, we're anti-censorship, we're not trying to hide information, we want, I want information to be out there for the world and for people to see it. So until the dialogue starts going up, this is a first for me to hear something like this. And it's a little just, you know, disheartening to hear that's happened, you know? So I appreciate you taking the courage to come up and speak to us, I know that, I sat there at that podium before, I've been on the other side, and I've had to speak to councils before, and it's a little nerve-wracking at times, so thank you for your courage on that. The Relay for Life, I wish I could be there, I'm gonna be out of town that weekend. Wish you luck, I just had, one of my friends from a long time ago, uh, has survived cancer four diagnoses since she was 12 years old, she's been diagnosed four times with cancer and survived four times. So, um, I really appreciate what you're doing with that. And then I'll leave it at, and that's it, thank you so much for your time.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Newsome, all in favor? Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned.
The city of Waukegan is replacing about 20,000 water meters with a new automated meter, which provide for accurate, timely, and reliable reading without having to gain access to customers' properties. The new meters, which will be replaced at no cost to the customers, will be able to identify high water usage and potential leaks. In addition, customers will be able to access their water usage and account information conveniently online. The first thing you need to do is schedule an appointment with Professional Meters, Inc. to have your old meter replaced with a new automated meter reader, AMR for short. Look for a postcard in the mail with the call information or call 866-270-9629. PMI will arrive at your scheduled time to install your meter. They will arrive on a truck or a van with a PMI logo, the PMI installer will have on a shirt or a jacket with a PMI logo and will carry a PMI ID badge. Installers will also wear booties over their work boots to ensure they do not carry dirt, mud, or water into your home or business. The installation process should take less than 30 minutes. The installer will take a photo of the old meter to obtain a record of your final meter reading and the condition of the pipes and fittings. The next step is to turn off your shuttle valves located on your water meter line near the meter. Remove the old meter and install the new AMR meter. The transmitter, which transmits your water usage data to the city, will be placed on a convenient location near the meter. The installer will take a photo of the new meter once it's installed. And that's it. The PMI installer will make sure everything is cleaned up, collect his tools, and head on to the next installation. You may receive a follow-up visit from a PMI manager to ensure your satisfaction with the installation and to make a quality control check of the meter installation. For more information about the automated meter reading installation program, please visit www.waukeganil.gov. If you have any questions regarding the meter installation, contact PMI at 866-270-9629, or the City of Waukegan City Collector at 847-599-2997.